Okay, we're good.
You ready?
At this time, I'd like to call the Township of Fairfield Planning Board meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Stand, salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice was posted on the town's website as well as in the official newspaper and also posted in the board outside of Town Hall. At this time, could we have the roll call?
Mayor Galice.
Here.
Mr. Gasparini.
Here.
Councilman LaForgia.
Here.
Mr. Waldron.
Here.
Mr. Spila. Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Palafonte.
Here.
Mr. Can't, um, Mr. Dutcher.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Cafone.
Here.
As this is the reorganization meeting of the Township Fairfield Planning Board, at this point in time, I'd like to take nominations for the chairman. Is there any nominations?
I make a nomination for Paul Cafone for chairman of the board.
Are there any other nominations before? Seeing none, is there a second? All in favor and roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Mayor Galice.
Aye.
Mr. Gasparini.
Aye.
Councilman LaForgia.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Palafonte.
Aye.
Mr. Dutcher.
Aye.
Congratulations. At this time, the meeting is now turned over to the chairman for nominations of vice chairman.
I'd like to thank members of the board for your confidence for another year as we move forward in two thousand and twenty-five. I'd like to have the motion for a vice chair of the planning board. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mr. Palafonte as vice chair.
Please take the roll.
Mayor Galice.
Aye.
Mr. Gasparini.
Aye.
Councilman LaForgia.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dutcher.
Aye.
Uh, Chairman Cafone.
Aye.
Also, we're going to do our appointments of attorney, professional planner, secretary and trans- transcript services. We could take this vote for one vote overall.
You can do it by consent.
Okay, we will do that. I'd like to have a motion to nominate Peter King of King Munch and Collins for an attorney, professional planner, John Sabo from Burgess Associates, secretary Steve Berry and transcript services Jennifer Miller. Do we have a motion?
Second. Uh, Mayor Galice.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gasparini.
Aye.
Councilman LaForgia.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Palafonte.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dutcher.
Aye.
Chairman Cafone.
Aye.
Also like to have a motion for a waiver site plan committee of two members, Jim Gasparini and Tim Wald- Tom Waldron.
I'll second that if that was a motion.
That's a motion.
Uh, Mayor Galice.
Aye.
Um, Councilman LaForgia.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Palafonte.
Aye.
Mr. Dutcher.
Aye.
Uh, Chairman Cafone.
Aye.
Also, we need a motion for adoption of our rules of procedure of the planning board of the Township of Fairfield for the year two thousand and twenty-five. A copy is attached. Do we have a motion?
No move. Second.
Uh, Mayor Galice.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Gasparini.
Aye.
Councilman LaForgia.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Palafonte.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Dutcher.
Aye.
Chairman Cafone.
Aye.
Under a discussion of items, we all have a list of our two thousand and twenty-five meeting dates, which have been posted in the clerk's office, the municipal building and advertised in the Star Ledger and the Progress newspaper. Do we have a vote for those meetings?
No move.
Second.
Uh, Mayor Galice.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gasparini.
Aye.
Councilman LaForgia.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Palafonte.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dutcher.
Aye.
Chairman Cafone.
Aye.
That concludes our reorganization meeting. We're going to move on to our regular meeting. Can I have a motion to close the reorganization meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to call a regular meeting of January fourteenth to order at seven eleven P. M. Um, Steve, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Galice.
Here.
Mr. Gasparini.
Here.
Councilman LaForgia.
Here.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Spila. Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Palafonte.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Dutcher.
Here.
Chairman Cafone.
Here.
Adequate notice of the time and date of this meeting was posted in the lobby of the municipal building and delivered to the Star Ledger and the Progress. No, no applicant will be heard after eleven P. M. Uh, can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from the October eighth meeting two thousand and twenty-four?
Second.
Uh, Mayor Galice.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gasparini.
Aye.
Councilman LaForgia.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Palafonte.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dutcher.
Aye.
Uh, Chairman Cafone.
Aye.
Under old business applicant for two thousand and twenty-three, three seventy-two Fairfield Road LLC, three seventy-two Fairfield Road Block, two thou- two thousand seven hundred and one lot three, I have a letter consent to carry to February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Could I have a motion to carry that applicant?
Second.
Uh, Mayor Galice.
Aye.
Mr. Gasparini.
Aye.
Councilman LaForgia.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Palafonte.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dutcher.
Aye.
Chairman Cafone.
Aye.
Under new business applicant for two thousand and twenty-four, Jim John Ken Properties, eighty-seven Fairfield Road Block, one thousand two hundred and two, Lot twenty-three. This is a preliminary and final site plan C variance. Enclosed is our information.
Thank you Chairman Richard Skolnick on behalf of the applicant. We'll try to squeeze all our testimony in by that eleven o'clock cutoff time, if that's okay, I don't know.
You got it.
We'll, we'll do our best. I'm representing Jim John Ken Properties. It's eighty-seven Fairfield Road and as you mentioned, block twelve oh two, Lot twenty-three. We're here for some fairly modest site plan amendments and modifications to an existing warehouse. There's no changes to the footprint of the building, no changes to the footprint of that structure. We have some new ramps, rehabilitation of the parking lot, some new garage bay doors along with a roof and facade replacement, some lighting and landscaping improvements as well as some drainage. One variance, I'll call it very minor, uh, there is one loading space that's undersized. Your ordinance calls for a twelve feet by sixty and we have twelve feet by forty. We have a slight reduction of about one percent in impervious. As I mentioned before the meeting, Chairman, we'll start with Mr. Petry, our engineer and architect tonight. I think he's going to be about twenty minutes or so. And then I have representatives of the new owner of the building, if necessary, on the warehouse use. We'll address Mr. Berry's January eight review letter. With that, if I can, uh, call Mr. Petry, have him sworn.
Raise your right hand. You swear firm testimony about to give before the board's truce, help you God?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
J. Michael Petry, P. E. T. R. Y.
And you're a licensed engineer?
I'm a licensed engineer, I'm a registered architect and I'm a professional planner.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are.
And you've been sworn before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey?
More times than my wife cares to admit.
Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn in, qualified.
Okay, uh, Mr. Petry, I'm going to let you go here. You know the rules about marking exhibits, uh, if they're new and they're not exactly what's in the record. When you go through, could you just call out the last revision date on your plans to make sure we're all talking about the same thing here? And we'll start with A one.
Okay. There's a series of, uh, plans that are clipped to each board. Everything that's in here is in your set, but they've all been colored for clarity so that you can read them from further away. So I'm going to start with this top sheet and call it A one with the date. This way I can write in twenty-five. So the, the first A one is an aerial photograph of the surrounding area. It's included on our title sheet. A two is the existing conditions demo plan, S P two in your set. It's dated three by three twelve twenty-three something four. A three is the layout plan. And it is S P three in your set. A four is the grading and drainage plan. It's S P four in your set. And the A five is the lighting and landscaping plan. In your, that is eight, it is, I'm sorry, S P five in your set.
Okay, so the same stuff, it's just with some colorization.
Right. I have building plans and elevations down here as well. I'm just going to do a quick mark on those so that I don't mess up my numbering. A six is the existing floor plans. And A seven is the proposed floor plans. A eight is the proposed building elevations and renderings. I think I only wrote twenty-four twice. I'm going to pat myself on the back for that. The existing property is designated as Lot twenty-three in block twelve oh two. It's located right down the street along Fairfield Road, opposite side of this, immediately adjacent to the ramp to Route forty-six West. So we technically, we have, we have frontage on two roads, uh, which makes for a little bit of an irregular, uh, representation when I come to talking about side and rear yards. Technically by ordinance, this is the side yard because this frontage is shorter and this is the rear yard. But every time I talk about this project, I'm going to talk about the loading being in the back, in the back of the building because that's how we see it. So from a technical perspective, the side yard setback that's, that doesn't comply is actually in the rear of the building. The parcel is a little bit irregularly shaped as you can see on the aerial. It has about three hundred and thirty-two feet of frontage along Fairfield Road. It has a depth, uh, along the, the ramp of approximately a hundred and seventy-five feet. The lot line that abuts the property to the east, which is twenty-two oh one, that has a depth of over three hundred and thirteen feet. The parcel has a total of an acre and a half, just over an acre and a half. Uh, and I'm going to refer to the existing conditions plan because a couple important things we talked about. Little over an acre and a half. And the property has a cross access easement. So the property to the rear of us, front on Route forty-six, and you can drive through from that property to this property to Fairfield Road. A little bit of a problem sometimes, but we're, we're finding ways to deal with it. The, the access easement allows for both properties, so our property can come through from forty-six and this property can come through from Fairfield Road. There's also a turnaround easement in the back. So the area that, that serves as loading for both is kind of, it's got a blanket easement over it that says you can turn around on my property, I can turn around on your property and we're going to cooperate somehow. Um, and that's likely because neither building on its own has sufficient space for that backup. There's a paved parking lot today for approximately forty-two parking spaces and those parking spaces run along the easterly limit of the pavement here, abutting the building on the easterly side here. And then there's parking along the back of the building as well. Currently, the property has a, a series of existing non-conformances. And now I'm going to read because I don't want to get the numbers wrong. The existing lot width requirement in this zone is two hundred feet and the existing property has a lot width of a hundred and ninety-eight feet. Obviously, we're not changing that. The side yard setback, as I pointed out, is required to be twenty-five feet and it's twenty-four point five two feet, uh, at that location. The maximum building coverage permitted in this zone is twenty-five percent and the existing building represents thirty-nine point eight percent. The maximum impervious coverage is fifty-five in the zone and the existing condition has sixty-four point four. There is a loading area requirement of twelve by sixty. The loading area exists at the rear of this building. It's undefined, it's not striped as a space, so we didn't call it out as an existing non-conformity. But the, but the condition exists today as it will in the future.
Mike, on that, we're proposing a, a twelve by forty. Did you talk to the ownership group and are they comfortable with a, a smaller loading spot?
Yes, we're, we're, we've had continuous communication, haven't been able to do both the building and the site. We've had continuous communication with, with ownership. We understand their wants and their needs. And this is the third, third or fourth building that we've worked with them on, uh, in, in the area. Uh, they're, they have the facility, the, the same group has the Wellington Plumbing Building on Passaic Avenue, right down the street from my office. Uh, and they have two facilities, uh, on Fairfield Crescent and Fairfield Place in West Caldwell. So we've had the opportunity to work with these people, actually looked at another site before this. So we've had the opportunity to work with them pretty much continuously for the past three or four years on properties and, and we think they're a great client because they take buildings that are in kind of sad shape, like the one that we're talking about here today, and they make them into something a lot nicer than what you see. So I'd say overall, this property and this building are dated and in need of renovation and, and a fresh investment. I'm going to take a second to talk about the building and I'm going to refer to A six to start. So the existing building, uh, has a total of just over sixteen thousand eight hundred square feet. The front portion of the building is office space and the rear portion of the building is warehousing and they do some, they did some light manufacturing in this facility. The front office space is sublet to a tenant who has been in there and has the ability to be in there for another year. Um, our goal, uh, our client's goal is to negotiate them out of their lease they're working on, have been working on it since they purchased the building. Their intention, the owner's intention is to occupy this entire building with their public sewer, um, service, which is a, a jetting company that does work for mostly municipalities and government agencies. They're currently in West Caldwell. They've expanded out of their space. Um, they're going to continue to have both op, both places functional. So they're going to have office staff that's going to occupy the office. They're going to have warehousing space for their material needs here. And the intention is to have a portion of this building serve as equipment storage because their equipment costs a lot of money. And if I just flip the plan up for a second, what you'll see is a complete renovation of the office, gut, gut the inside, do everything brand new. New bathroom, new conference room, all new I T facilities and cubicles with private offices and conference rooms used for training. Uh, additionally, warehousing space that'll go out to the existing loading dock again, which is going to be renovated. And the equipment storage, which includes overheads, uh, doors along the back of the building so they can pull their equipment in and out of this space. Overall.
Can you just call out the sheets, Mike?
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, that's A seven, which is in your set sheet, A one oh two. Uh, overall, we're going to take the mansard off of the front of the building. We're going to build up the front of the building with a proper power pit. Uh, we're going to build a cornice that's not only going to go across the front of the building and pop at the entrance, but it's also going to be carried down, down the side of the building along the, uh, along the entire easterly side of the building so that the character is there, uh, regardless of what direction you see the building from. So what you see is a combination of, of brick and stucco on the front facade. Um, there's a brick, there's brick banding, um, there's brick at the entry area and brick ornamentation at the, at the perimeters. Uh, we carry those vertical elements, uh, down the side of the building so that we have brick and stucco as long, as well as that, uh, as well as that cornice carrying down, uh, the side of the building too. Because a lot of what you see on this building when you're coming westbound on Fairfield Road is this facade. So we wanted to consider that a little bit more important maybe than the back. Uh, we wanted to give the building an appropriate look. So along, uh, as I mentioned, along the back of the building, there's going to be overhead doors. Let's see, uh, here, but I can probably pop it. Other side. So in the back of the building, our loading dock, our new, uh, man door and a series of overhead doors along the back of the building that face the building of front on Route forty-six. Again, the, the total footprint of this building, sixteen thousand eight hundred and nine square feet is not affected. We're not increasing it, we're not decreasing it.
Mike, the equipment that you're talking about inside, are those the public sewer trucks that are going in there?
Yes, trailers, things like that, yes. And we've had discussion with the zoning officer, we've had discussion with the fire official, and we understand that we, we have provided for fire separation within the building. We're going to sprinkle it within that space so that everybody's needs are satisfied. In terms of the exterior of our site, I'll just go through the layout sheet again, S P three in your set, this one has a little bit of color to it. The existing spaces that are there, that are on the site are vaguely striped, I would say. Um, there are no conforming handicap parking spaces, so we're going to create two handicap parking spaces near the entrance. We're striping around the exit door, so we're going to park it here. We're allowing the parking to come from the back so that turns can be made easier. And we're incorporating, uh, free speed bumps through the site to kind of slow people down. Evidently, there's, uh, a bit of traffic that the owners have found has come through here from Route forty-six using this as a cut through. And so the intention is to, to try to slow some of that traffic and deter some of that traffic from cutting through. We are reconstructing the front wall. Currently, the front wall kind of wraps around to the west side of the building, the bump out on the west side of the building, and that's the handicap entrance. What we're going to do with the walkways, we're going to reconstruct it and raise it up so that we can get handicap accessibility, uh, right in the front here. It doesn't have to come up a lot. I don't know why they didn't do that from the beginning, but, um, we're going to do that and we're going to take it out. There's also a secondary driveway that comes in along the west side of the building. That secondary driveway is there for the purposes of allowing P S E and G to serve as the transformer that's historically, uh, provided power to this building. Uh, as I said, there was an industrial use in the back. We're not going to have that kind of power need. So we are in the process of, uh, getting P S E and G to remove the transformer. We'll just have a direct service connection, we'll bring in a new service connection to the building. But, so we won't need the access for P S E and G. We'll continue to need it for, um, a fire egress so that people can get there. And we're even going to curb that side of it because there's a slope that comes down from the, from the ramp that we want to ensure we, that can be maintained. So we're going to take out the driveway in the front, we're going to take out the walkway that goes across the front, and we're taking out some of the areas that, that are currently, that are currently impervious.
So slight, slight reduction in impervious here?
Yeah, there is, there is a slight reduction in impervious. Um, I think we're taking it, uh, down from sixty-four point four to sixty-two point seven. It's a reduction of about a thousand eleven hundred square feet. So it's not insubstantial. We are taking the existing pad that serves as the refuse area and we're creating a real real live refuse area that's enclosed with fences and gates, uh, on a new pad at the rear corner of the building, same location, but this one would be enclosed. We are, as we reconstruct the loading area, we're putting in a, a concrete, uh, pad here for the trucks because it's, um, the pavement in the back of the, of, of the facility is not in great shape because it's, it's subjected to a lot of truck traffic. So if we're going to park trucks there, we, we want to make sure we have something of substance, again, concrete there and a con- concrete, uh, apron, oh, about fifteen feet deep along the back of the building for those overhead doors.
Mike, the, uh, fire department wasn't happy with the truck turning radius for their truck. Can you comment on that for us?
Yeah, the truck, we used a truck that's smaller than theirs. So we're going to model it with the, with their current largest truck.
And we're agreeable to a condition to, uh, get a sign off from the fire department?
Clearly, we have to get a sign off from the fire department before we can get, um, before we can get approval. And we also need to sign off from the fire department before we get building permits. So inside, um, we've had discussions about how we're going to handle fire suppression and he put that in his memo. So we're, we're cognizant of it. I've talked to him about it and we're going to address it. From a practical perspective, the, the access through this site for, for fire vehicles isn't changing. Parking's still in the same place, it's just restriked, driveway's still in the same place, it's still the same width, everything comes back the way it does today. So if it doesn't work when we put a template on it, it doesn't work today. Um, we, we've actually taken out some parking here to make those turns a little easier.
Mike, I promised twenty minutes, can we almost bring it in?
Yeah. Have you timed me so far?
We're about eighteen minutes.
About eighteen, I got, I got a couple of minutes to talk.
Okay, whatever you need.
Couple of brief minutes to talk about stormwater because D E P is involved here. Obviously, we have a D E P application pending. Uh, we have, we had originally had some plans for collection systems and D E P said, no, 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 you're not going to take away our water quality. You're going to sheen flow across the lawn as you do today and let it go to the inlets as it does today. So we modified our plan to take out the storm drainage that we had along here to provide drop curbs, uh, along the, uh, the proposed double block curb so that the water can flow through the, through the lawn area into the inlets and provide water quality. Um, D E P has given us all their comments, we've addressed all of their comments and we believe that we're right now just twiddling our thumbs and waiting for their approval.
Michael, if that is indeed a fire access on that side of the building, do they have to sign off on those speed bumps?
Uh, yeah, the speed bumps, it's, that's a good question. The speed bumps are actually in the agreement between the two property owners that there's allowed to be three speed bumps. That's how we got the number.
I'm not talking about the owners, I'm talking about the fire department.
I understand that the fire department's got to sign off on them. And if they want, if they would prefer speed tables, we'll do that in lieu of. So, um, they didn't raise that in their memo, but they may not have picked up on it either.
What's a speed table?
A speed table is those, those new things that raise you up, take you flat and then drop you back down.
Like a plastic path, wider?
They're wider.
They're wider.
They're wider.
A wide bump. They're about, they're about twenty feet wide.
Okay, got it.
So, um, you asked the question, so if you put me over by thirty seconds, that's why. A couple of little things, we did replace the existing dry welder here that's silted in, uh, rather than clean it out, we're going to construct a new one. Um, we've incorporated some new storm drainage into a, into a manhole where currently the storm drainage ties blindly into the pipe on the adjacent property. So we've contained that all on our property. And then finally, relating landscaping, landscaping, which is And then finally, relating landscaping, landscaping, we have all new light fixtures that are going in. We have three pole mounted light fixtures, um, along the easterly property, or along the easterly end of the pavement. We have three light fixtures mounted on the easterly side of the building, three light fixtures mounted on the northerly side of the building, and three bollards, uh, located along the walkway. I don't know why it happened that way, it just did. Three, 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 and three, um, but we have very even lighting throughout. Uh, these are all, um, these are all down fixtures, they're all hooded fixtures so that they direct light down. They're, you know, night sky tolerant. Uh, we have a half a foot candle over the entire parking area. There's a little bit less in some of the movement areas for the loading. We have, uh, appropriate lighting on the footpath as well. And then we have taken out the existing shrubs that are along the foundation of the building, and we're calling for all new boxwoods along the foundation of the building. I thought the boxwoods were appropriate plant to go with the, with the brick and stucco look. Um, it gives it a little bit more formal edge to it. As Rick said, we do have the one variance. The variance is for this, this loading area. So in this zone, the loading area is required to be twelve by sixty. Um, we've made this pad twelve by forty. From a practical perspective, we can extend it to sixty and meet the ordinance. We don't need it. If the next person needs it, they have the ability to do it and still have it on the property. Um, but we don't need it because we don't expect trucks of that se- size at this location for our, for our purposes. And as owners and occupants of the building, we feel it's, it's more appropriate to make the right size rather than oversize it. Uh, in my opinion, this variance can be considered under a C two criteria where the benefits outweigh the detriments. In my opinion, the reinvestment in this tired and rundown property represents a benefit to the overall community, the look of the building, the improvements to the parking, the lighting, the landscaping, all of this lifts up the property and provides an overall aesthetic improvement to the general area. While I believe that the variance is very minor in nature, given the fact that the actual loading location has not changed from the existing location, I can offer that a future user that requires longer trucks could simply extend the concrete pad another twenty feet and still be within the property limits and still be at the same location that it's on to, at today. So whether we approve this application tonight or whether we deny this variance tonight, the loading area is in the exact same location. Uh, we're trying to make it better by putting in concrete. We believe that the concrete's a better solution, and we believe that we've put it in an appropriate size of twelve by forty. I really don't see a substantial detriment to this variance because it doesn't really affect anyone. It's behind the building from a perspective. It doesn't affect the adjacent property owners. In fact, extending it would make the, the swing into the rear property probably a little bit more difficult when it's occupied. Uh, so we believe that, that keeping it at its current proposed size is a better solution, not just for this property, but for the surrounding properties as well. And with that, I probably went over by two minutes.
Mister Chairman, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Mike, you know how this works in Fairfield?
Yep.
You've got an abundance of parking. Do you need it all? Twenty-six are required according to our engineer.
According to the ordinance, yes, twenty-six required. We have reduced from forty-two down to thirty-six. The plan says thirty-eight because we have two E V spaces and they double count. Um, can we, can we lose parking, um, without issue?
Yeah, but now, I believe it would be, you know, good to have it, uh.
We could, we could agree. Mayor, to even bank these spaces in the back? There, there's seven spaces in the back. Um, that would take us from thirty-six, thirty-eight down to thirty-one where twenty-six is required. Um, if, if we were to bank these spaces and they were not needed at any time in the near future, we could eliminate them and further reduce impervious.
So what would you do, Mike? You'd show a little phasing plan or banked parking on the, on the, on a compliance set? So they wouldn't be, you could keep it green and it wouldn't be constructed? And they'd have to come back out and do the construction if necessary?
Yep.
So you, like a little.
Would that change the impervious, Mike?
It would reduce it, yes.
Even though that's an access roadway?
Well, the access drive is through here. Well, look, it's, it's. So the, the survey shows that the access, we have, we, we've maintained twenty-four foot access back here. The access that's shown on the survey is a dashed line that's shown on the diagram. And, and it goes through the parking of this site and it goes through the parking on the next site. But from a practical perspective, it's the drive aisles that are utilized, um, for, uh, today and the drive aisles will be utilized in the future. So we still have twenty-four feet here. So we can, we can eliminate parking here, uh, even temporarily, not pave it today and, or repave it today. And, and if this parking were needed by the owner in the future, they, you know, I think they'd have the right to build it, but we could have that area greened now and save a little bit of money on paving.
It's always, it's always better to have the pervious than impervious here. Um, my other question was, the back garage doors? The reason you don't need that kind of swing is because you're utilizing the other property, is that the idea?
Yes, there's a, there's a cross easement again, um, that allows, allows us to use this whole area.
Right.
On their property and then, then to use ours to, to swing trucks.
Alright, thank you.
And those are filed from here to here?
They are.
Recorded. I could give you a co- I have it. It's recorded with some, it's ugly, but.
Mike, is it actually surveyed and lined, the easement, or is it?
The easement does not have, um, it does not have meets and bounds.
Balance?
Let me share, this would be a turn.
Why don't we mark that as A nine?
So.
If you would, Mister King, just throw A nine on there, cross access.
This, this is the diagram I was talking about, and it shows the use of the driveway as access, and this all back here is turnaround. And that's what this.
Mike, you wanna put that on your board, do you need to do that, or?
It's actually shown on the survey and it's shown on our, on our plan. So if you, if you go back to the, if you go back to the sheets, you'll actually see the, um.
Okay, I see.
So to the extent you're gonna. Add some grass, you gotta stay out of that area, wherever, whatever that is exactly.
As I said, the, the diagram is just that. And it's, it's been utilized by both, by both properties, um, along the drive aisles that separate the parking. It's, if you plot the diagram on the drawing, it goes through the park.
Mike, let me ask you a question. What's the reason to keep the asphalt on the, uh, left side of the building, on the, uh, western side of the building?
Just for egress access.
Egress access to what?
Egress doors from the, from the building to come out to that. So the intention was to keep it.
So can't we just, uh, eliminate that and put a sidewalk in, which would be a lot less impervious? Because the whole thing is to get the impervious number down and hopefully comply it.
Right, I, I think.
And maybe the owner can come up and testify to how many employees he actually has and, and parking spots too, uh, when we, when we get to that point.
So Mike, let me ask you a question about the easement. Did the, the owner on the, the adjacent property approach you and talk about the easement? Or did you approach them and, and discuss how you were gonna?
No, the, the easement was filed in the, I think, the eighties.
So when, when you, when you noticed everybody, they didn't get in touch with anybody? They were just okay with it, okay? So when you, when you repaved the lot, are you gonna approach them to try and repave the entire lot? Or are you just gonna saw cut it up the line and pave your side of the, the property?
Knowing, knowing this property owner, they're going to approach the adjacent property owner and talk to them about paving the whole thing. Because they like, they like their world to be clean.
Can you testify to the use of those five overhead doors? I went to the site today, and when you start backing trucks out of those five doors, that guy behind you is not gonna be able to work.
Well, understand that our, th- this equipment is gonna get taken out pretty much daily and bought back in daily. But once it's out, it's out. It's out for the day, cause that's, that's how they make money, quite frankly.
So at eight o'clock in the morning, five trucks leave and?
Probably at six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, five trucks leaving. Or whatever's in there. It's actually, some are trucks, some are trailers, so.
Trailers are gonna have a hell of a job.
Oh, the, you've seen, you've seen these trucks, you know, on the streets. They've got, they're, they're big, long tanker trucks with hoses on the top of them. They're used to jet sewers.
They're pu- they're like a pump truck.
Yeah.
It's a pump truck and usually they're towing like a jetter.
Yep, they stop for gas at the Sunoco station.
So like, the dumpster's gonna stay in the same location?
It's the same location, but we're gonna enclose it.
Is a block access to the easement that they were looking to have on the, uh, the side of the building of the entrance of the ramp?
No, this, this, it's access from the back.
Right, right, but how, it, so they're only gonna use that, Jimmy had mentioned that side is only for walking? They're not gonna, they're not gonna park trucks?
Yes, and we can, when the owner comes up.
Then we can talk about that.
Yes, no, there's no parking, there's no parking on this side.
And theoretically, your garbage is picked up on the other guy's property.
Well, it, it, it faces out this way, so they'd come in and they'd probably pick it and turn and go.
Mister Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I guess the one question I have, and it, it might be a moot point, but if you can comply with the sixty feet and it doesn't affect the adjacent property, why ask for the variance? It doesn't make any sense to me. Your elevation's gonna be the same, a truck can drive over that section of deemed loading space. Why, why ask for the variance if you can make it work? Like, I don't understand that.
Um, we don't, we don't anticipate sixty foot trucks at this location for.
For the current use, but the variance goes with the property. So tomorrow, the, the current owner sells it, you know, that, that, that variance is in perpetuity, basically, right? So if we can comply and there's no impact to them other than they have a sixty foot pad and they're parking a thirty foot truck, why not do it?
We can.
I just think it's one less ask, in my opinion.
Does it, does it impede the, the, um, the easement at all, the extra twenty feet?
It does not. No, it's still outside.
We didn't think it was a very big ask, though.
I get it, agree, but an ask is an ask, right?
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, open to the public? Anyone from the public? Seeing none?
Okay, we're gonna call the owner's rep, see if we can do something with the sidewalk on the side. Chuck, if you'd come up.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board, it's the true self you've got?
I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Chuck McCrickert, M C C R I C K A R T.
And your, uh, position with the company is?
I'm G M for the Public Source Service Division, uh, West Polk.
And are you gonna be the operator at this site, the person who's stationed here?
I would be.
If, familiar with the company's operations?
I, I am, fully.
Okay, I think the, the mayor, Mister Gasparini, had some questions about anticipated number of employees. You're looking at the pavement, I'm just gonna call it on the left of the building. Um, you think we could turn that into a sidewalk from, maybe skinny it up a little bit over there?
I think it's a possibility, it's a consideration for sure. Yeah, we, we could probably neck it down to a sidewalk.
It's just an egress in case of a fire type of thing? It's not, you're not gonna be going in and out of there?
Well, I believe that, uh, we have from Mister Petrie, we have, uh, doors that go out that side. Uh, you know, in case there's a fire or something, people need to get out.
Right, it's not gonna be in.
Yeah, paved, paved area to walk on, you know.
Right, yeah, it's not gonna be where the employees go in and out of the building.
Not, not routinely, no, no.
Mister Petrie, was that a nod that we can take that down there? Chairman, if you don't mind, shuttle these guys to have a discussion here?
Yeah, absolutely. So we know that it was used for public service to, to work on the, uh, the transformer that's there. So you're gonna eliminate the transformer? So the board would like to see, once the transformer's eliminated, eliminate.
What do we have on the width, Mike, and what do you think you can bring it to?
We have about twenty feet today, um, and we can certainly take it down to five. And we're talking about a hundred, roughly a hundred and twenty feet. So if we take fifteen feet by a hundred and twenty feet roughly, we're talking eighteen hundred square feet of asphalt that can come out.
That's a good, that's significant enough, sure.
Probably brings us down to sixty, fifty-nine point eight.
Okay. It's a number, it's a number. Okay, so we're gonna add a note to the plan saying that, uh, pavement on the left is gonna become a five foot sidewalk? Is that, you, you comfortable with that, Mike, from Mister King?
Yes. It'll bring us down to about sixty, maybe fifty-nine point nine.
Yeah, it's pretty good, Mike.
Need a job?
Listen, you never know.
Chairman, I don't know if you had anything else, I didn't have any.
I have another question for you. How, how many employees do you, uh, foresee working out of this facility?
I guess we didn't do final calculations, we're still sort of in the planning phase. We have a rough idea what we wanna do with it.
Just the ballpark.
But, but definitely twenty plus.
Okay. Alright, so because the building, uh, the ordinance only calls for twenty-six parking spots. So if you can live with the twenty-six parking spots, that would bring our impervious coverage down.
Right. Uh, I think it like, it changes the, the whole dynamic of the property back there.
Well, I think we have.
Well, it makes it easier, you know, to drive through, you won't have cars parked there.
We had the suggestion of sort of phasing it, so we would keep those in reserve where they.
Well, you were talking about banking them, right?
The banking, that was the, the concept. He's not gonna construct them at the start, but he, without having to come back to the board, if he needs them, he's gonna go pave on another day after, you know, some test period. How many spots is that, Mike?
The, the seven back, the, the seven back here would yield about fourteen hundred square feet.
And that would give you how many spots, Mike? If you took out those seven?
Thirty-one.
Eight minus seven is thirty-one. Two of, so there's twenty-nine real spaces and two E V spaces.
So, I mean, that's a pretty good amount of spots, no?
Okay.
So if we, if we could not.
Twenty-nine plus the two E V?
Yes.
I think he's agreed on the banked.
So if we could not bank them.
What would that bring?
A bank is a sh- a bank is just a, a bank, you know? You can come back here, uh, when you're done building and say, ah, we wanna put them in, and we gotta say, okay. So, you know, we don't really accomplish anything with a bank. But you're gonna have twenty-nine spots, so you think you need about twenty plus. So I, I, I think you'll probably be okay, but you would, you know your operation, I don't.
So it's twenty-nine plus two E V, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Right, so it's thirty-one spots and you don't have, you don't have to have an E V to park an E V spot.
What would you?
Down to about fifty-eight.
It'd bring you fifty-eight, if you eliminated this parking?
If you eliminate this and you drop this down to a five foot wide sidewalk.
That'd be great.
And how about the, uh, the handicap or accessible spots, are they part of those twenty-nine?
Yes, they are.
So we're down to twenty-seven. We were riding the line.
Well, let me ask you a question. Your current operation now, do you get a lot of visitors or is it predominantly employee parking and that's kinda what it is?
The, the bulk is, uh, employee parking, but we get a fair amount of visitors as well. You know, salesmen, vendors, that sort of thing. So it would be nice to have somewhat of a buffer, uh, not, not just, you know, employees right, right to the line.
Well, we don't wanna impede your business, so if, I mean, you, you, you give us an indication of what you need and we'll see what, what the number is. But, uh, I, I think we can do, you can do well with somewhere around thirty.
Can we make it work with the thirty, uh, plus the two handicap and the two E V?
The two E V are in there already.
They're in there already.
And anybody can park in an E V spot, you know, it's not just for an E V car.
Uh-huh, uh, is, that's the case, Mike?
That is the case.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they're kinda charged their car, you're gonna have an E V charging station there, so, you know, one of your. Yeah, I mean, you know, they're kind of charged, they're, you're going to have an EV charging station there, so, you know, one of your employees is going to charge, well, then they'll park there. But otherwise, it's just a, a parking spot.
One of the EV spaces is a handicap space, like code.
One of the EVs.
So you're really not losing anything.
Right, so they, you know.
I, I think we could do it with the thirty.
Beautiful, okay.
There you go, so we will further reduce, um.
Okay.
Impervious.
Thank you.
What does that bring in total impervious, if you adjust it?
Fifty-nine. It's probably going to be down around fifty-eight, fifty-eight and a half. Or fifty-five is permitted and sixty-four point something, but I'm sorry.
Sixty-four point four existing.
Fifty-eight and a half.
So, so it's a, it's a good, it's a good gain of the over existing.
Good compromise, absolutely.
Alright.
If I could make one condition that, if we have to come back twenty years from now, Mister Gasparini will remember this conversation. That we have ceded under withering cross-examination.
If you come back twenty years from now, Mister Gasparini will not be sitting here.
I don't know, Mister Petrie said he's going to be going at it for at least another twenty, so we'll see. He'll remember this conversation.
He's a lot younger than I am.
So you, I just want to make sure you're clear, Mister Dutcher had said, if you would go out to sixty feet with the concrete, instead of forty, you would eliminate, completely eliminate that variance. It's up to you if you want to eliminate it or not, you don't have to, but it kind of makes a little sense what he said.
I get it, I, I think it's overkill too, you know, we're, we're designing by us, uh, you know, I don't see anyone in the future, you know, really, uh, putting those real big trucks or trailers or anything there. You know, I don't think the building really, you know, uh, draws that.
Yeah.
So would someone, or could someone do it in the future? Surely, I guess they could, but I think it's very unlikely given the site. The, uh, the, uh, uh, the people in the back don't do it, nor, nor would we do it.
Okay, so four EVs, that's fine. Any other questions for the representative?
No.
Seeing none, anybody from the public? Seeing no one, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody in the public for, want to testify for or against the project? Seeing no one? Close the public session. Anything, anything else, uh?
Any witnesses?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
You're good?
I promise we would, we worked hard to, to give you the information. If you don't have anything else, Chairman, we're done.
Thank you. Okay, obviously, we all agree on, uh, on what we, uh, had spoken about, so we're going, the attorney will read, uh, what the resolution will state.
So there, there's going to be a variance for the, uh, loading dock from a required twelve by sixty to twelve by forty. That's the relief that was requested, everything else was pre-existing. There is going to be no outside storage of equipment. There is going to be, either be speed bumps or speed tables. Uh, there's going to be a, um. Subject to DEP approval for the drainage. There is going to be a banking of the safe, uh, there's going to be no banking of any spots. It's, the spots are going to be reduced to thirty-one. And the sidewalk is going to be reduced to a five foot sidewalk, a hundred twenty by five foot, reducing the impervious coverage to around fifty-eight point five percent. Which is still in excess, but still under what was non, uh, it was pre-existing non-conforming.
Mr. Chairman, one, one more question. Do you have, uh, did anybody bring samples of the facade? The brick and the color of the, of the stucco?
No, we did not bring samples of the brick and the stucco, they have bits like that.
Okay, but the color that, on the rendering, are we, to assume that's going to be the color of the stucco, or?
We can take that approach, Mister Mayor, or we can, we can agree to, uh, to bring samples. When we, when we develop those samples during construction, we can bring them to the, uh, subcommittee that you just reestablished. Um, and perhaps they could review them to ensure they're in compliance with what we presented.
Well, that would be Steve.
Well, you, you're talking about the waiver committee, yeah, the Weaver.
No, well, there wouldn't be a waiver.
The Cyclone waiver.
We would be happy with the engineer to look at it and.
No problem. The other thing is also the fire, you're going to do the, um, radius of the turning for the truck and, um. And also comply with the fire requirement for sprinklers.
And the facade material.
And the facade, yeah, and the facade material will be reviewed by our engineer.
Correct.
The fire issue is going to be in the resolution?
Yes. Can I just clarify that the, we were going to do thirty spaces plus the two handicap? I think that's what the.
That's what I, that's what I understood.
Okay. I know you said thirty-one, there's two handicaps, so thirty plus.
One of them is a handicap EV.
Hmm?
One of them is a handicap EV.
Right, and the other is just an EV.
Ready for all? We're good? Can we have a motion to accept the conditions of this resolution?
So Mister Chairman, based on the testimony that was given this evening, I think it's a major improvement to a tired building. It would be a wonderful improvement to Fairfield Road and we welcome this business into our town. I will make a motion based on the conditions that were set forth.
Second the motion.
Mayor Galice?
Aye.
Mister Gasparini?
Aye.
Councilman LaForgia?
Aye.
Mister Waldron?
Aye.
Mister Pereno? Mister Palafonte? Mister Dutcher?
Aye.
Chairman Cafone?
Aye.
Good luck, good luck, good luck to your new business.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That was massaged perfectly.
Okay, we have just, just two miscellaneous, uh, approvals of the bills for Burgess Associates.
I'm a little disappointed, I want to meet Jim John and Kent. I'm, I'm looking in the road there, I'm saying, okay, who's Jim, who's John, who's Kent?
Brother's coach. How they named it, Jim John Kent.
Jim John? Nice.
They're, they're like the Wizard of Oz, they're behind the curtain.
They're here somewhere.
Alright, before we close, we have the approval of the bills for Burgess Associates, invoice four five five seven six and four five three four six. And the bills for Bowman Consulting, invoice number four four five eight four one. Do we have a motion to approve the bills?
Motion to pay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a motion to close the meeting.
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.